Welcome, everybody, to the Town of Hilton Head Island Gullaguchi Land and Cultural Preservation Task Force Special Meeting. This is February the first, 2021. This meeting is being conducted virtually in accordance with Town Council Emergency Ordinance 2020-13, and can be viewed live on the town's public meeting Facebook page. And there is the link at facebook.com/TownofHiltonHeadIslandMeetings. I am going to officially call the meeting to order. Teresa, are we in compliance for you?
Yes, we are.
I'm gonna go ahead and call the roll. Carolyn McVitty, didn't see her. Todd Theodore. Joyce Wright. Ibrahim Abdul Malik.
Present.
Thank you. Martha Davis.
Here.
Thank you. Good to see you.
You, too.
Palmer Simmons.
Here. I seem to be on a different screen, but I'm here. I don't know how I got out of the loop of things, but I am here.
Okay, Shawnee Green will hopefully will join us a little bit later. And Teresa White, I'm expecting to hear from her as well. Next item I have is the approval of the agenda. And before I get into that, I just want to give some opening comments. Want to say hello to everybody, and it's been a while since we've all been together at this, in this particular meeting. And I trust that everyone is staying safe and healthy. And there certainly has been some things that have been going on, even though we have not been meeting. Want to welcome those of the council, town council members that I see that are on the call as well. And I know I saw Tom Lennox and Alex Brown. Also want to welcome Peter Christian, our chairman of the Commission Board. And of course, the town staff. Just wanted to make sure we greet everyone, and again, thank you for staying engaged as much as possible, even from a distance. Even though we haven't met in a while, I know that the staff has been working on some things since we last met. So Happy New Year to those who I haven't had a chance to say Happy New Year to. Teresa, I have one question about the agenda before we ask for an approval. The very last item, I believe, was to approve the calendar.
That's correct.
And it asked for motion to approve the minutes. Is that correct, or is that just kind of a mistype?
Give me one second. Let me check to make sure we're talking about the same thing. Yes, I'm looking through that. That's a typo. It should be approving the meeting schedule. I apologize for that.
Yes, I just wanted to make note of that.
Okay, thank you.
With that slight correction, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
We're not able to approve anything just yet because we don't have a quorum. If we can get our fifth member here, we can go and approve those items.
Okay, so we probably need to come back to this to get a quorum. And the same thing for approving the minutes, right?
That's correct.
Okay, we have several minutes that we need to approve from July and August and September. We'll come back to that, and hopefully we'll get another member or two to join us. Let's keep it moving. We'll go to citizen comments. Teresa.
Yes, sir. Public comments concerning the agenda items were to be submitted electronically via the town's open town hall portal. These comments were provided to the committee for review and have been made a part of the official record. In addition to commenting on the portal, citizens were provided with the option to sign up for public comment participation by phone during the meeting. The public comment period closed at noon on Friday. There were no requests from the citizens to participate by phone.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I noticed, reading through the comments, there were only a couple of comments, I believe, by George Baker. And it was mostly in support of what we're doing here, so that's, that's good to hear.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question, please?
Yes, sir.
I guess my question is, I know we're being streamed live on Facebook. Is there any way that we could have access to comments that are being, being put as we're meeting now? Whereas if someone on Facebook has a comment, is there any way that we can address those comments real time?
I'm not sure we have that ability. Teresa.
We can look at the comments. Staff will look at the comments, and we will see what we can address as the meeting goes on.
And the-
So I was told we can do that.
And staff is the only one at this point that can see them, right?
No, this is live, so anybody on Facebook can see who makes comments.
Okay. I don't know that I have another device to get on while I'm doing these other things. Does that answer your question, Ibrahim?
Yes, I guess it answers my question. I do believe sometime when we have discussions, questions do come up. But I've never seen where, in other situations, where they have been addressed real time. So I just want to, I want to make sure that the public knows that we have that capability and that we are willing to accommodate that concern.
Okay, very good. We'll do the best we can to address them in real time. Okay, the next item I have is discussion items, the review, progress, and next steps for the Historic Neighborhoods Overlay District LMO amendments. And I believe Teresa has a presentation for us, and this will give us a good update, hopefully, of what's been going on.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make some comments about where we are right now. So to review where we started, in 2019, council passed the framework of top priority projects from the Gullaguchi Preservation Project Report. It was decided by the task force to create a historic overlay district, which would be the most urgent to implement. And staff began work on this overlay district in early 2020. Unfortunately, COVID-19 has slowed some efforts. So the meetings that covered these overlay districts, the overlay district, were held in July, August, September. And if we remember, we reviewed the different amendments that were proposed. And to remind you, these amendments covered reducing buffers and setback requirements for adjacent properties and from streets, reducing access easement widths, including RM4 properties to a proposed RM6 that allowed six units per acre and eight units per acre for at least five acres, increasing building height and private surface. The amendments also created a definition for family that was exclusive for the district, and introduced to the application the family compound, which is the single parcel of land owned by members of the same family, which can be accessed by 20-foot easement, and infrastructure placed in the order of construction. And you have your family subdivision where lots are subdivided, and infrastructure rather being placed for the entire subdivision at one time would be placed in order of construction, and eliminating the burden of placing that infrastructure on one family member. And the purpose of these new applications is to preserve those properties within the Gullah landholders. There was also a home occupation amendment, which was proposed, but it was decided that we would revisit that at a later date. So in September, the task force voted to pass the overlay district to the LMO committee, who had their own revisions. And they passed those to the planning commission. And in preparation for the planning commission, signs were posted, letters were mailed, and they were sent to property owners within 350 feet of the proposed changes. And because of the signs and letters, there were all citizens that were calling, interested in the direction of the overlay district, had questions, concerns about the proposed amendment changes. A planning commission did vote to pass the district, but requested that staff research ways to exclude platted subdivisions from the proposed area. And staff needed to look into that to see whether or not that was able to be done. This process was, is currently at the PPC level. They have their own questions and concerns, which are the following. That developers could take advantage of the flexibility and development standard regulations because property, any amendments are tied to property, not people. And the focus of the area, the focus area for the district is too large. So right now, staff is looking for a way to narrow that focus area. And another concern was the increased density issues that go with the overlay district. So as I said, that the overlay district is currently at the PPC stage. And at this point, they are trying to determine whether it's possible to move forward with the family compound and family subdivision because just the focus is on preserving properties within the native family, and we want to be able to do that. So staff is looking for a way to narrow that field to see if there's a limit to qualifying areas that's similar to Beaufort County, who has their 50-year ownership rule for properties that are compound or subdivision. So this is where we are right now. Just that we don't want to not move forward with anything, but try to move forward the items that will benefit the community to the best, and then we will look at the other items closer later and be able to move, be able to move those forward. And I, I take any questions or comments right now in, in the discussion order.
Okay, so we need to do this in, in order. I will call the roll, and if you have some comments or questions, you may make them at that time. I'm start, it looks like the, the order of our members that are present is with you, Ibrahim.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thanks, Teresa. I guess my initial question would probably be, do you have a timeframe on when we met, you know, make the recommendations and carry the recommendations to the next step?
Yes, sir. We have, staff will be meeting with PPC on Wednesday, the third. And we will be talking further about these items that I mentioned, the, the flexibility in terms of the family, what we can do in terms of family compound, family subdivision, in terms of how we're going to narrow the focus area. I'm trying to see if we can move forward with those two items, and then we'll meet again on the 25th with a more narrow, we'll have, we'll have it a little more streamlined then. We'll be able to hopefully have a clear understanding of how we can move this forward.
Okay, I don't know if I got an answer. I understand you having meetings, but are you looking at perhaps two months down the road before implementation, or that's what I'm kind of asking now?
It depends on what PPC decides. So hopefully, staff is meeting with PPC right now to see how, what items that can be moved forward. But I don't have a definitive date as to when things will be passed. As soon as I get those dates, I'll be able to give you that information.
Thank you.
Okay. I think it's important to, to observe that there is some work being done, Ibrahim. So I know it's hard for them to give us an exact timeline, but we will certainly be looking forward to new developments and being kind of kept in the loop as to what those developments are. The public planning committee is the committee that we're talking about, where the overlay district rests now. Martha Davis.
Hi. I would just like to thank Teresa for the update, and I have no questions right now.
Very good. Thank you. Palmer Simmons.
Good morning. Once again, definitely thank you, Teresa, for the update. I guess a couple of quick concerns that I seem to hear is, I think she mentioned coming out that the focus was a bit larger, and going to try to narrow the items they may be able to push forward. That sort of leads me to think that, you know, we, we want to be careful that we don't start to piecemeal the whole effort. I think when you start trying to back items out of the plan, or not necessarily back them out of the plan, but you leave stuff on the table to come back to, sometimes that makes it awfully difficult. So I think if we put in the time and put in the time that's needed to carry the desired amendments forward, I, I think we'll do, we'll, we'll serve ourselves just as much justice by doing that versus, you know, leaving items off at this time to, you know, to move certain things forward. I think if you put in the time to carry the, the package forward, I think we'll, we'll, we'll be better served than just saying, let's do one or two now and come back. You know, I find the comeback is always more difficult than doing it the first time. So my concern is that we try to keep the, the items as, as much together as possible versus trying to break them apart and break them out and do certain ones. I think they all pretty much have the kind of value we need to, to move the, you know, move the district forward. But that would be my concern, that, you know, what is the definition of focus being too large and, and that we don't piecemeal the effort by taking certain items out?
Teresa, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, sir. I certainly understand your concern about leaving items behind. What I don't want to happen is that there's a risk of not moving anything forward. We want to make sure that people take advantage, are able to take advantage of these benefits as soon as possible. Just a moment. So I guess the question becomes, what are your thoughts concerning what the family subdivision and the family compound versus just moving everything forward?
I mean, I, I guess for me, Teresa, if I were to answer that, I mean, you know, I would, I would not want to place a higher value on any one thing. I mean, this entire effort included all of those such items. I mean, obviously, the family compound and the family subdivision, if I'm saying that correctly, I mean, those are, those are the main ingredients to this whole effort. However, if we, I, I think anything that you take away from the entire package, I think it's, it probably just as well take away from, from those two major ingredients as well. So it would be, it would be my thought that it, it goes back to my initial thought. If you start to take away from the items, I, I think it loses the strength in which you're trying to give these particular two areas.
And I understand your concern with that. If we were to, if we were to move forward with those two items, do you see yourself taking advantage of them at all?
Well, I mean, well, I, I, I mean, it's, obviously, we hope that these, these two items have some advantages for the historic neighborhoods. But, and, and any of it will give a boost, I would hope, to the equity that we, we try to have and, and being able to use our property to its, to its best uses. But I still remain that, you know, I'd like to see as much of the package stay together and move forward, even if it means, you know, we, we take another day to do so. I, I just believe that if you put the, put forth the effort the first time out, coming back is always a more costly kind of situation, in my opinion. You know, in other words, second time around, for what would be relatively the same effort, to me, is just far more costly than doing it, doing it the first time. I mean, you, you're still trying to reach the same goal and do it in inclusive instead of in pieces.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Thanks.
Yeah, let me just piggyback on, on some of the things that Palmer is asking, if I can help in some way. The priority work plan that we had approved had several items on them. We identified the historic overlay district as, as a main priority. And I think that what I understand is that we, yeah, we want to try to move those items forward that we have the ability to get some approval for, certainly at the public planning committee level. I guess, Teresa, what I would ask on behalf of Palmer and the rest of our task force and our public is that we just kind of be kept in the loop as to where those other items are, so that, as Palmer said, they don't just fall by the wayside, or we kind of know where they are, and understanding that we can certainly work on more than one thing at a time. And I think it's important also for us to have that interaction with the community and, and have everybody understand exactly what's going on. We may not know all the nuts and bolts of what staff and the public planning committee are, are doing specifically, but generally speaking, just to kind of know where some of those items stands, I think, are important. We always talk about case studies, and we kind of like to know what kind of progress is being made. And I'm, I'm going to hold the rest of my comments for, for just a minute. I wanted to recognize that Teresa White has joined us. Welcome, Teresa. Thank you for, for joining the meeting. We are at the point of discussion from the historic overlay district LMO amendments. And Teresa gave us an update on where we stand, and I wanted to just take a minute to acknowledge you and see if you had any questions. And following the order.
I'm sorry I missed her presentation, but I don't have any questions at this, at this very moment.
Okay, thank you. Again, my further comments are related to the case studies and kind of what staff has been working on, Teresa, and the progress we've made, also with the data that we have, and to see just where we are and how we're doing, you know, today as opposed to six months ago or a year ago, to see what kind of progress is being made. I think that's what's important. I had the opportunity to reach out to staff, or the first part of the year, and that's also a part of our agenda as far as scheduling the meetings. And also, I, I would include in that, again, the, kind of keeping us abreast of what's going on. Those questions also I have, Teresa, are related to, I believe, the quarterly reports we make to the town council. I, I find those to be, for me, anyway. If I'm reporting, then I, I know what we've talked about in the last three or four months. Understanding that the COVID-19 and these virtual meetings have created kind of an awkward situation, and it's been a while we've all but we're trying to regain that momentum and refresh us all as to where we stand. And, and my conversation with staff that we promised to be a little bit more informed and, and touched and involved. So I'm encouraging my task force members that are here now that this is the first meeting of 2021, to reengage, re-refresh, refresh yourself with what we've already done and where we left off, as Palmer stated, with the issues that are not moving forward, to see where they are and how we can help in those efforts. Palmer, I don't know if that answers your question, but I do understand the process, and again, the level of where we are, and trying to move some of the things forward that we can move forward and not get bogged down by some of the things that were, had a little more challenge to them. So I'm hoping that we have a meeting of the minds here that those things that are questionable and we have challenges with, that will continue to work on those and address those, even as we go along trying to move the historic overlay district forward. Because as you said, I think they are all related in some way, so. I'm hoping that I help answer your question, and I hope I'm not overstepping your response, Teresa. But my questions for you involve, again, the case studies and the, the data, and the records and reporting, and again, of what's going on in the community and what you have seen and what you have noticed. I'm looking for you to share those things with, with us in, in this format, and certainly in our reports. Can you speak to maybe some of the things that you've come in, challenges you've come with, or even successes? I like to hear, you know, just where we are and what we think that the, the challenges that the PPC is facing. If we can just, you know, be a little bit more informed. Can you speak to that?
Yes, so some of the challenges that PPC is facing, as talked about earlier, is that the area is too large. You, if you remember, if you're talking about historic neighborhoods, it does not just include Gullah families. It also includes platted subdivisions. It includes people who have purchased properties, and they're, they now make those areas their home. So it's trying to narrow the focus so that the people who need to benefit from these amendments can benefit from it. That's the biggest concern. And that's the reason why it's important not to leave items behind, but to focus on areas that we can actually move forward and have people benefit from. In terms of the case studies, um, staff is working on a way to draft case studies in a way that it is not, um, narrowing in on a particular family. This is a small community, trying to do so in a way that it will, it will keep everyone what they're trying to do to themselves. We don't want to put that out there. But in terms of overall case studies, in terms of, um, what we're seeing, we're gonna, we're working on putting together something for that, that we can have to you once we're able to finish doing that.
Okay. Uh, I've, I've kind of said this a few times before over the years. But when we talk about case studies, I think we're actually after the situations that exist, not necessarily specifically naming the people. Yes, this is a small community and probably half of us or most of us already know some of the issues that people are dealing with because they're calling us. But we are aware of that. We're not trying to expose or infringe on anybody's privacy. But I think it's important to understand the challenges of the situations that exist, not necessarily by name. And, uh, and if, yeah, if we can come up with a way to have some accounting for that, to see just exactly what's going on in our community in the last six months or the last year, last two years. When we started this effort, we had some data about where we stood as far as, uh, native island lands and how much is being lost or how much is being, uh, uh, developed or, or moving forward and some of the challenges that people are having. I think it would be important to share some of that information in a general setting. Again, we don't have to have specific names. The other thing was that I think that you had mentioned in your earlier comments, and we've had it in some other settings, about the definition of, uh, these native island or historic neighborhoods and a way to identify specifically the effort that we're trying to, to, uh, to move forward here. And I believe there was something that was a, a definition in the county that was helping us a little bit with that. Uh, I'm hoping that we can, uh, maybe model something after that will help to, uh, help public planning committee, uh, feel more comfortable with that as far as moving forward. I'm a little cautious about narrowing the overlay as well. I understand that it caused a lot of heartburn in our community when people saw those signs go up and how it was going to affect their neighborhoods or their particular subdivisions. But I, 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 I don't want to be in a situation where we're working, uh, this hard and this long to get to a point that we have to keep going backwards, uh, to have the discussion certain challenges that, that, uh, that is. Uh, we, we know those challenges exist. They've existed for years. So I think it's about how we define, um, what the native island properties are, how we define the historic neighborhoods and who qualifies and what qualifies. So I'm hoping that we, we do a little bit more work in that direction, uh, with staff. Uh, but I'm really interested in the case studies and the data, uh, to, to keep up with what we're doing and see how we're, we're all doing. Does that make sense?
Sir, it does.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just want to say something, I guess, in reference to, um, uh, we talk about the focus group and those, um, developed areas that seem to fall into the overlay as well. If I understand correctly, I don't, I didn't know that the overlay would change anything in the already developed areas. Would the overlay district, um, bring on changes into those already developed areas? I, I didn't think that the overlay district, as we understand it and, and its actual placement would defect any change in those developed areas. It is my understanding that those areas pretty much function within themselves and have their guidelines that are relatively, relatively separate and apart from, um, just your standard rules and regulations that would come uh, even under the current LMO, otherwise, you know, they are pretty well set and would not be, uh, bring on any direct changes to it. So I'm, I'm, I guess for my clarification, I, I, I'd like to know that, which seems to be a, a hiccup as it affects those, you know, would be a highway to affect those areas. So I, I, I'm not sure I'm quite understanding that part of it. And, you know, if I might, um, Mr. Chairman, take a, a, a personal, uh, point of preference and share with you, uh, what I would be, what I would deem a case study as it directly affects to me, if I could. Uh, I myself, um, had an issue here with my property. And, um, the definitions that are currently in, in the LMO, um, a lot of it could be deemed sort of vague at best in a lot of areas by definition. You know, we, we have to make sure that what we get approved could stand a legal determination. Now, my situation, um, I took the, the privilege of challenge in what I thought was correct and, uh, went to court, of course, was found guilty of, um, uh, some citations that I was handed down. And it's, 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 it stemmed from, you know, what we, uh, in the historic neighborhoods like to sometimes say that, you know, we have been doing it that way, which don't always make it right. But however, uh, if we look at the rules in which we are trying to make some changes to, you know, we, we can do it a long way for a long time. And it's okay until someone brings a challenge to, to what you're doing. And if the rules don't benefit what we do as a, you know, historically or legally, then, you know, we are once again going to be pushed back away from those things that we, uh, we say we are fighting for. We say we are fighting to do, to be able to have the access and, and, uh, develop our property and to, to live a life that, that's, uh, historically, uh, worked for us. And, 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 and the goal is to be able to do that and do it legally and do it within the legal confines. But I definitely, you know, we have talked about, um, the, the legal aspect of what we're doing. You know, I haven't been challenged on this property, uh, except for in the last, uh, year. For over 60 years, there's been no challenge. So, you know, when the challenges come, whenever it may be, uh, we need to make sure that what we, what we implement will withstand those challenges from, uh, sources who might, might come into your, come into the neighborhood and say, well, yeah, you've been doing it for this, this long, but I'm here now and I don't like it for whatever reason may change. You know, we, 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 we all want the right to be able to challenge what we feel is, uh, fair to us. But in my case, I felt it was fair for me to do what I've done for years, uh, most part legal. But just of a matter of point that, you know, when we do this, we need to make sure it will withstand a legal challenge, not only now, but, but in the future. You know, those challenges, in my opinion, will be sure to come.
Yes, I think the point is, is very well taken and I appreciate you sharing that from your personal standpoint, Palmer. Uh, we realize and recognize that we have other situations that have arisen in our, uh, community where things may be challenged for the work that even what we're trying to do now. And that's why I'm continuing to ask, uh, for those, uh, for staff to continue to enlighten us and to, uh, uh, make those points available that we know what we need to work on or identify those areas where we have problems. I think one of the things that came out, uh, when we've had our planning commission notices out there and we had a lot of response and feedback, uh, from the community. And I think once folks kind of engaged, I had some conversations, I know several of us talked to people directly. Once people kind of engaged and understood what was going on, there was a sense of, uh, or a willingness at least to, to, to understand better. I guess where I'm trying to go with that, Sharice, is the educational piece of educating our community and our public as well as certainly our task force members. And again, as Palmer stated, if we have any issues with that, then those are things that we need to address as opposed to wait until something happens one by one by one. Hopefully what we are doing here will help to address some of those issues. As Palmer also stated, the things that some of us have been doing for the last 60 years may be challenged or changed by the incorporation of the town and the town LMO and what we all try to abide by. So those are, uh, are not always easy discussions, but I think they are certainly important and they need to be addressed. Because while it's one person today, tomorrow's going to be somebody else if we don't, uh, you know, kind of uh, look at those things and how they affect the community. We understand that one thing can't be a cookie cutter for the whole community. And we have, uh, a very diverse island as far as development goes. Uh, I do understand the work of the PPC and the questions they have about developers coming in. But I think that will also be addressed, uh, by trying to create some definition as to what is a historic neighborhood and who are the native island people that we're trying to protect as far as the Gullah Dichi culture is concerned. So I reiterate the fact that we need education as well as definition. And also we learn from our case studies. I will keep saying that. Hopefully it will resonate, uh, with the staff and the work that we're doing. Sharice, would you like to respond to, to any of that?
Uh, yes, sir. We'll have those case studies for the next meeting. In terms of, I got, also have a question about, um, the family subdivision, family compound, I want to slip that in right quick. Those are what's going to be focused on for PPC. Anything else, um, we'll bring forward at a later date. And I certainly understand trying to make sure that the rest of those items are kept in the loop and not falling away. So we'll keep you up to date on how the rest of those will come into play. And certainly keep you up to date on the progress of this overlay district.
Yes. I think it's important that we just continue to look at things in a comprehensive way. Again, so we're, we're not piecemealing things. And again, if we, we fix one thing and then something else comes up that may be similar or if we learn from what we're doing to address, uh, some of the, the things we're doing going forward. That's what I'm encouraging and I'm hoping that we can engage, uh, with you, Sharice, to help you in any way we can as far as working in the community, you know, whether it be with case studies and certainly with, uh, what we hear and know. I mean, Palmer was gracious enough to share his personal experience, but I'm sure there are many, many others that are out there and we don't, again, don't necessarily have to have specific names. Uh, but we do need to know the situations to address, so we can address these things in more in a comprehensive manner. That's my observation. Any other comments on this particular item?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I seem to remember, uh, there was some conversation about adopting, uh, language, legal language that would give certain defines so that it would not necessarily affect those planned development units or communities outside of the Gullah neighborhoods. So I think it would make me good to just maybe go back to that point of addressing, putting language in the document, you know, versus a lot of physical movement. Because language, I feel, with as we, as we start to develop the physical, um, evolution of the overlay.
Yeah. Um, Sharice, uh, you can help me with this. I believe that is one of the challenges that, uh, the PPC is struggling with. As far as that language, is, is that correct?
We're having the attorney look at the ways to identify certain things within the overlay such as the focus area, such as ownership. In terms of the language, the LMO is drafted and it's also, it's drafted in a certain way. And it's also looked at by legal staff. So it's already a legal document. I don't know if that helps address your question about language, but it's drafted in a way that it is legal.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking more of language as religion. But I, 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 I hope I make myself clear, but I was under the impression that maybe staff mentioned that they can create language that would necessarily identify people and not, uh, boundaries.
We have a definition for family which, uh, talks about extended family, spouse, um, your children. To go beyond that, we're still looking at how to, um, address those areas to narrow the focus. Again, this is tied to, any developments of property is tied to property and not people specifically. So that part gets to be a slippery slope, which is why you, you can't just say, well, this is just for this specific community. It's tied to property, not people. But everything else is, when you write it in the LMO, it's a legal language.
I think that, uh, we understand that the LMO is a legal document and, uh, that's kind of what, but it's also a, uh, a living document that evolves and changes according to some of the situations that arise. I believe the other part of that, Sharice, is that, yes, we may not be, be able to make it specific to a particular group of people. But in this case, the particular group of people are tied to the land and that is what we are addressing. So hopefully we can find some definitions, uh, that will help you navigate that slippery slope as you, as you mentioned. Uh, that, that's what I think about it. And that will help, uh, to address some of the other issues that come up, uh, in our native island and historic, uh, neighborhoods, if you will.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I, I definitely would, would, I don't know that I say caution or otherwise when we, um, look at this entire thing. You know, and I always question if I'm hearing things correctly or not. But I like to think that the, the issues here definitely, in my opinion, is tied to the land. The land is the key ingredient that's always going to survive, uh, generations. Because, you know, like my dad would always say, we didn't come here to stay, which means that people leave, the land remains. And I, I, I think we have to be very careful that what we do, um, is tied to the land where, where we may live, you know? So i- i- it's really a land issue, uh, in my opinion. And it's the rights that comes along with the land, uh, 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 people may own and where it is. You know, I, I, you know, I try not to use myself because, you know, I find myself to be in a pretty unique, uh, position where I have a larger piece of, of land. And, you know, the people who are, uh, more really affected than I am are people who are trying to maintain smaller pieces of land. are people who are trying to maintain smaller pieces of land and do it for a generation to come. So, and I, I think it's, it's a lot been said about how do we change the language to accommodate other communities and other developments? I mean, I, I go back to my point and I guess somebody may, may answer for me, so I still not in the dark about just how the overlay would affect the already developed areas. I, I find that most of the available areas are relatively outside of the, a lot of the language of the LMO, not, not, obviously not all of it. But once these planned unit developments are, are done and in place, the LMO is, is not thrown out of the window, but a lot of the rules and regulations that govern what they do in the developer areas don't always, as I understand it, come under the LMO, how they are governed inside. So I, I still beg the question as to how the proposed overlay district will affect the other plan, you know, it's just a matter of those people not liking it? Or does it directly change what they do and how they operate inside of their development? So, you know, I, I just, I don't, I don't know that we want to go so far as to plan them in, plan them out or otherwise. I mean, they are already planned in my, in my view. So, you know, maybe we can just get an answer to that and then we'll know which is it that we're really trying to do by creating the overlay district. Their areas are already planned. So are they saying it's an infringement on them? Or just what is, what is that bit of conversation when it comes to the overlay district? And where it lies within the other available areas? But I definitely, I think our focus, in my opinion, is the land owned by the people.
Yes, I, I agree with you, Palmer, for the most part. I think the other part of that challenge is what happens when people acquire lands within these historic overlay districts. Will they be able to take advantage of what's intended to preserve the culture? Yes, it is about the land, but I think in this case, it's uniquely that the land and the people kind of go together. Most of, not most, I think all of the people who are within the Gullah Gichi culture are obviously on the land. So I, as I understand it, that is again, one of the challenges we're having at the PPC level. And so how do we protect the work that we're doing and not open it up to developers or any other unscrupulous efforts that might come in and take advantage of something that was not intended to? But I, I hear you loud and clear. Okay, other comments or questions on this particular item? We'll continue to work with staff. I'm looking forward to working closely with staff and hopefully they'll give us some things that we can do that so that we're better informed about how this process worked and the work that we're doing. Any other questions on this particular item? Comments? Okay. The next item that I see is the top priority projects and Sharice, before we move to that, since we, we have a quorum now, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Can we circle back to the approval of the agenda and other minutes that needed to be approved?
You can do that now.
Okay. We made that one note in the correction to the agenda, but at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion that the agenda be approved?
Thank you, Ibrahim. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, in this format, we go through and call the roll. If you approve, you may say approve. If you have some questions or comments, you may say so at that time. Ibrahim Malik?
Approve.
Martha Davis?
Approve.
Palmer Simmons?
Approve.
Teresa White?
Approve.
And Levon Stevens, as chairman, I do approve as well, so the agenda is approved for the record. We have some minutes from July twentieth, twenty twenty, August sixth, also twenty twenty, August the twenty fourth, and September the first of twenty twenty. I don't know if you all have had a chance to read through these minutes or go back and refresh yourself with, but we do need to have these minutes approved in this meeting, so at this time, I'd like to a motion to approve the minutes from July twentieth, August sixth, August twenty fourth, and Sept- September the first of twenty twenty.
I move that we accept the said minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Chairman, I, I did not have an opportunity to get those minutes, so I'm a little reluctant to second, even though I hear that the minutes are there and maybe everyone who've had an opportunity to read them, someone might, might second, my, it's just that I have not had an opportunity to read them.
Chairman, I can second the minutes, but I do have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I guess my comment is, was there a particular reason why we have so many minutes to bring into record now?
I would certainly defer that to Sharice. I'm going to guess is because we maybe didn't have a quorum or some other dynamic that happened in the meeting. Sharice, can you answer that question for us?
Yes, it's that we were working to try to try to get those, our agenda was so heavy that I was working more on those items that went into those meetings. And so sometimes the minutes are not always ready for the next meeting. So I didn't, those meetings were very extensive, so I didn't have those minutes ready. So that's why they're ready now. I apologize for the fact that we're doing four minutes right now, or sets of minutes, excuse me.
I have a second.
Thank you, Ibrahim. I'm going to call the roll. Ibrahim Malik?
Approve.
Martha Davis?
Approve.
Palmer Simmons?
I'll approve.
Teresa White?
I approve.
Levon Stevens, I also approve. Palmer, as well, taking as well Ibrahim's question, that hopefully we'll get a chance to go back through those minutes and sometime in the future, issues of questions, we can raise them. Thank you so much for approving these and moving that of the agenda forward. Okay, next top priority project. Sharice, this is part of the discussion we've been having, so definitely excited about this.
Yes. You know, COVID nineteen has made it challenging to move forward some additional projects. And as we're moving forward, we will keep you up to date with the quarterly report, as mentioned earlier. So staff is looking through projects that are impacted by budget and projects where people can maintain a safe distance because that's still the challenge right now. So the possibilities that can move forward at this point are the education programs. Also creating the fund for the clearing titles and property taxes. Programs to educate Gullah residents. There was actually a, an education program put on by the Centers for Ayers Property Preservation. There was a webinar back in December that was sponsored by LINX. You should have gotten that notification. And a lot of this helps if, you, you know, and i- i- if you're able to share this information with the community at large. So as staff moves forwards toward, moves towards implementation of these programs, that will, that information will be made available to you and we would like you to share this information with the community. The next project that's definitely up for implementation is that staff is working with the Heritage Library to establish a virtual genealogy clinic. And as you know, that anybody who is seeking information on how to clear Ayers property, they're looking for Ayers property assistance, you have to have your genealogy done. What, and whether or not you're going to go to the Center for Ayers Property Preservation or go through a private attorney, you still have to have your genealogy done. So I'm very excited for the start of this clinic. It will make that process that much easier. This should be up and running within the next few months. And as we're getting closer, as we get closer to it opening or being functional, tho- that, those details will be made available to you. And please, as I'm making this available to you, the task, I am seeking the task force's help in sharing this information with the community. As well as anything else coming forward. That's all I have.
Okay, I have some comments and questions, but I'm going to go through and call the roll. Ibrahim Malik?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I guess the only question I have with respect to the fact that we do have a new town manager on board, has the town manager been briefed on this list of priorities and the report?
He actually does not start until the end of February. When he comes on board, he will, this will be shared with him, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Martha Davis?
I have no comment right now.
Okay, Palmer Simmons?
No comments.
Teresa?
I'm looking forward to having an opportunity to work with the new town manager. And see if he would be open to more flexibility in terms of the LMO and how that can impact the Gullah community. Because of the previous town manager who was in office for over twenty-five years was, was systematically creating roadblocks, so he seemed to be trying to help on one hand. Because he had all that information that went back to nineteen ninety-five. And with the RUDAC study, he seemed to have taken all the information that was in the RUDAC study and did the exact opposite of it. What, what the community wanted to have done to advance the Gullah community and use that as a weapon against them. And having this consistent pattern of not doing what people wanted to have done on all these different task forces and doing all these reports and still not implementing what people wanted is, is it causes so much distrust of the town now and of the, the, and such low expectations for the success of the task, this current task force that we are serving on. So I am hopeful that since he and several other major townspeople have left there, it will be better in the future. A better relationship with the Gullah community.
Thank you, Teresa. Sharice, would you like to respond to any of that before I have my comments?
Well, thank you for your comments. Certainly, we will, we hope that we will be able to better move forward. But I, I don't have any, I'm sorry, I don't have anything else to really add to that. But we, we're hopefully we'll be able to move forward with the rest of these as they come about. But I don't have any, I don't have any comments for that, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How close is the staff?
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
Oh, Teresa White.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to ask how, how close the staff is to and, and, and actually how close the staff in, in the town are to actually making this overlay district, the historic overlay district for the Gullah community a part of the, the LMO.
We're still at the public planning committee stage. They have some questions, some revisions, and those will be addressed in the February third meeting.
We are having a meeting on February third or they are having a meeting?
They are having a meeting and it will encompass the overlay district discussions.
Is that the only meeting that's planned, the one on February third?
The PPC will be having another one on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Teresa, I'm sorry you missed the first part of the meeting, but the PPC has met, I don't know, at least once. And it has been on their agenda, so it's on there to have that on their radar. Okay? I have a couple of questions and comments as well. You said there's some work being done with the Heritage Library?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm not aware of exactly what that is. And I would only suggest that, again, with these recommendations and priorities, that we as the task force, certainly me as the chairman, be kind of kept informed as to exactly what that work is. And I would also recommend that we have at least some representation from the task force as we are working with those different recommendations or programs or the different organizations, even in the community. Hopefully, that'll be something that staff will do for us to work a little closer in our efforts. And I think that all, also helps to give some educational pieces to exactly what's going on. I, I just don't want to wait till, you know, staff has already developed a whole program and then put, presented to us and then we all have a bunch of questions. I think we'll save a lot of heartburn, time and effort in these meetings if the task force is engaged in the work that we're doing. Certainly just, even if it's just awareness as to what's going on and how it's being done. And we certainly would be allowed to have some input before it gets to a final stage. That also goes along with the educational programs we keep talking about that we need to do as a town. Again, to educate folks on what's going on, happening, exactly what the overlay district is. And that's just one example, I know that's our priority. I know that the Center for Ayers Property had that workshop. But we, I think as a town and even more specifically, even if it's as a task force, need to keep engaging the community for education and awareness. The more that we can be involved, the more we can have some ownership to it, the more we can be advocates for the work that the town is doing and probably the fewer questions we'll have in these meeting settings if we are involved. As Ms. White just spoke to, that reduces, in my mind, the questions of trust and transparency. I know, I know staff is busy and I know they're working on things, but I will continue to remind us that the more we can be engaged, then I think it works better for the process. The piece about the The, um, piece about the, um, the town manager, um, Sharice, I know he's not coming on until the end of February, but, uh, I think that we can still share some of these documents and work with him, uh, even prior to him starting work. Is that correct?
Um, let me ask about that. I don't have an answer for you in, right now about that, but in terms of when we can share this, oh, okay, hold on just a moment.
I mean, he's a member of the public, so, I mean, this is all public information. It's nothing real confidential, as I understand it.
It's not confidential at all. I just want to, and certainly we will share this information with him. I don't have a specific date to give, um, but we can share this with him.
If I could just jump in, um, Jennifer Ray for the record. Um, while the town manager, our new town manager was at the workshop late last week, he is taking some time between leaving the town of Bluffton and coming here on the 22nd. Clearly, um, as you said, Mr. Chairman, all of our packet materials are open to the, our public information, but we are at this point not forwarding stuff to him because he's going to take on new work starting on the 22nd. We continue to keep the current interim town manager, Josh Gruber, and the leadership team involved, and we will certainly bring, uh, Mr. Orlando up to speed as soon as he's here and ready to, um, get rolling on this.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Jennifer. Yeah, I'm just trying to encourage us or help in some sort of way because he's going to be overwhelmed when he gets here. And, uh, the, the more we can do to make that transition smooth, a smooth process, and, um, I'm sure, sure he would appreciate, uh, having some things that, uh, just to make a smooth transition. It was my, my observation. Thank you. Other comments or questions? So Sharice, you, I assume you are taking some good notes. I'm really, uh, hoping that we will have some programs coming from the town, uh, whether they be, uh, educational events or just, you know, even social events. I understand the challenges of the COVID-19, but we can certainly do virtual events as well. I think the more we engage the community, the more we engage the task force, uh, the better buy-in we're going to have and the more that we can all be, uh, supportive of the work that staff in the town is doing. Certainly when it gets to town council, uh, that would make their job a little easier if everybody is, uh, informed, well-informed. And if those of us who are members of the task force and other parts of the staff are involved and engaged in the process, uh, we feel better about taking some ownership, uh, and helping to move a lot of those things forward. Some of the items that were mentioned in the meeting earlier, like the family compound and family subdivision and how we identify people and how land is identified as it opposed, as opposed to people. Uh, all of these things, I remind us all that, uh, should be pertinent to the preservation of the Gullah Geechee culture here on Hilton Head, which is what this whole committee and this effort is about. And so if we keep that in mind, everything that we say and do should be about helping to preserve, uh, the land and the culture. And, uh, I think as Palmer stated earlier, yes, it is a land issue a lot of times, but we know that the people are connected to the land, so we have some of those, uh, kind of, uh, peripheral things that are connected to the work that we're doing to preserve the land and the culture. Anybody else have any other questions or comments?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like one, maybe one question?
Please.
And then one comment perhaps. Uh, I guess the question is on, um, on the, the second, will the PPC be voting on the overlay or will there simply be an open discussion?
On the third, it will be a discussion.
Okay. Now, the, the, I guess the second question that I have, um, involves, uh, the work that the Heritage Foundation will be doing regarding, uh, genealogy. We have a situation where I think the, if you want to work at trying to avoid property going into the heirs, we have to look at the policy that we have right now that says that, that total infrastructure has to be in place before the town will acknowledge a deed being registered at the county. I know of a situation where elderly, uh, grandmother of our, of our community wanted to deed some property to her sons, but because they did not have the means to put the infrastructure in, she could not deed that property and have it registered with the county because of Hilton Head policy. So even if we do the genealogy, if the policy is still there in such a way that it hinders the actual deeding of the property, what good would it do?
Establish, I, I'm not sure I'm clear on your question, but I will say establishing genealogy is actually the first step to clearing heirs property. You have to know who's on your family tree before you take it to the Center for Heirs Property Preservation or your private attorney to figure out how to clear that property. I'm not sure if that answers your question. Um, in terms of the infrastructure being placed, that's something that I would have to come back with you and provide an answer because I don't have that answer with me right now.
Okay, let me just maybe phrase it a different way. When we have a situation where you have clear title and all you want to do is simply deed a piece of property to a living heir, you both are, there's no one, there's no need to probate the, the matter. It's all, it's from a live descendant to a live ascendant. Current policy says we have to have infrastructure totally in place before that, before the town will allow the county to have that deed registered. Am I correct or am I wrong about that?
Um, again, that's something I would have to research. If I understand your question correctly though, in order to do a complete subdivision, in order to do it under regular subdivision, um, regulations, you do have to have your infrastructure in place. Now, if you were to move forward with the family compound, family subdivision, you would place the infrastructure as you're placing the different, um, pieces of property. So that's the benefit of being able to move that family compound, family subdivision forward. You're placing your infrastructure as you're going along. If you are doing it under regular rules right now, you have to place your entire infrastructure first.
Okay, just to have further clarification. So right now, if I, if I wanted to deed my son half of the property that I own right now, what would be required of me?
Currently, if you are doing it right now, you would have to put all of your infrastructure in place because there's no regulation. Those family compound regulations have not been passed yet. If you were to do this right now, you have to put all your infrastructure in first.
And that's definitely because that's what the town policy is?
That's currently in the LMO right now, yes.
Is that something that the overlay district is going to help to, uh, clarify and mitigate, Sharice?
Yes, if we were able to move forward with those two pieces, that is something that could take, be taken care of right now. Um, I know that there's concern about pieces of it going forward, but you're just providing an example as to why it's a good idea to try to get something to go forward where somebody could take advantage and then work on the rest of it as we're going along. Because the longer this sits and the longer people have, you know, if we don't move forward with anything, you're at risk of having nothing move forward. But this, if you move this forward, this could get, this could actually benefit somebody who wants to subdivide their property, doesn't have the means to put the infrastructure in all totally right now, but you can put it in as you're going along.
Okay, I guess one other question for clarity. Is there, is there any restriction on the amount of property that a person would have to have to do that?
There's not a written restriction. You have to have enough acreage. That's the only restriction that I can think of. You have to have enough acreage to support that density that you're trying to establish. Like you can't, there's, there's a certain number of acres you have to have to subdivide that. And again, that's something, to get more specific, I would have to research that further for you. And it also depends on what zone you have.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Um, thank you, Abraham. Um, Sharice, do we know how much heirs property we have on Hilton Head? And do we still have records of how much property is still within the Gullah Geechee community?
I don't have those specific numbers in terms of how many acres are left, uh, right now. Um, I'm certain that in, even in our databases, that number has to be updated. Uh, some things have changed hands over the past year, um, as shared by our tax assessor. Um, in terms of heirs property, there's really no way of knowing how many. It's hard to determine based on if I'm looking at a piece of property, if this is heirs property. I can only make a guess, but I can't tell you certainly.
And I think, again, to my point, that's where it's important to work with, uh, the task force, with those of us who are engaged in the community. We may be able to help identify, uh, some of those properties and, and again, some of the case studies, uh, which we just had two case studies presented in this meeting from Palmer Simmons and, uh, Ibrahim Malik. So that, those are clear examples of why we need to understand the data and understand the situations that people are dealing with. And I also would say further that, that's why it's important, I think, that we as task force members can help staff in the work that they're doing. So please don't hesitate to reach out to us. You may look at a piece of property and not know if it's heirs property or not, but I guarantee you there are those of us who are on this task force that can probably tell you if it is or if it isn't. Maybe some of our relatives or just some of our, our neighbors. So I encourage us to continue to keep, work closely with staff and to work with the data and to be a little more, uh, intentional about, you know, the information that we're trying to obtain, not just speaking in general terms. And again, like I said, we already had two case studies presented, uh, this morning. And, uh, I will say to our task force and to members of the public that we identify these, this information, case studies and things like that. It's not always that we're going to be able to find a viable solution, but certainly if we don't know what the challenge of the problem is, we don't stand a chance at least addressing the question. Still goes back to education, educating our public and educating, uh, members of the task force. That might also work in reverse where if we as task force members, we, community can help educate staff about some of the properties and the dynamics that exist and some of the problems and issues that we're having. I also speak from a very personal standpoint from people who call me with particular challenges that they have. So we do have some, some ways to identify, uh, the work that we're doing and the challenges that we might face. Emma? I'm sorry, somebody's.
Yes, I, I, um, just, just want to, and this is, um, probably, it's just a matter of observation or just a matter of information. Um, you know, I, I just found just a bit compelled to say, uh, we, we, we come this day of, uh, February 1, the Day of Liberation for, um, for the African-American, um, community. And, you know, we, we sit here today, um, discussing the challenges we still face, on a Day of Liberation where we are still trying to find a way to fit in, you know? Uh, I, I just thought that was a, a ironic thought that just popped into my head. I thought I was compelled to say, share. Um, but, uh, you know, the, you know, our struggle continues to find a level playing field, uh, uh, and just be able to, um, survive as ordinary, everyday citizens where we live, you know? But I, I, I hope the opportunities that now exist for a fair and equitable world and society that we can always find that common ground among people, you know, that we can, um, uh, move our, uh, our island, our community, our, um, our world forward. So, uh, it's not a bad thing, you know? Uh, I believe it's a good thing that we see that challenges that still exist among us all. It's, it's not a, uh, it's not a, uh, something that affects individuals, but affect all of us. I mean, we live here as a people. So, uh, in recognition of the, the, the work still yet to be done, I just thought I would throw that tidbit in as we, um, as we move forward.
Thank you, Palmer, and that recognition of today is Freedom Day. And we know the month of February is a month-long celebration, uh, that we, uh, recognize. And your comments are very mu- much on point. Uh, we are just trying to understand and also to be understood. And I would just piggyback on that to say that the work that we're doing for the Gullah Geechee culture affects all of us in this community, whether you are native Islander or Gullah or not. So we do appreciate your, your input and your support. Uh, if there are no further comments, I want to move the agenda forward. The next item we have is the adoption of the 2021 meeting schedule. Uh, and I'm hoping that you all had a chance to look at this agenda. I've mentioned it throughout this meeting already, but, uh, I, I want us to have some thoughts about, uh, you know, what our meeting schedule should be, how often, and exactly what it is that we could and should be doing. Uh, it's not necessary that we have a, uh, a task force meeting, uh, on some sort of frequency. I'm more interested in the effectiveness of what we're doing. As much as I love meetings, I don't want to have a meeting just to have a meeting. Um, and from what I've learned in the past, I'm speaking personally, uh, that if, if the meetings are such an issue, uh, that they cause, uh, staff to have some challenges or heartburn about, you know, now we got to have a meeting, uh, that's not what I'm after. However, I do think that we need to have some sort of frequency with our meetings so that we can be, again, well-informed, well-educated, and we can become advocates of the work that we're doing. The only way that we can do that is if we know what's going on. So with that, um, I'm going to ask Sharice if she has, did you, uh, put together a meeting schedule? What are your thoughts about a meeting schedule? Uh, I mean, I certainly have my own thoughts and then we can maybe open it up to the task force. Sharice?
If you look at your agenda packet, there's actually a list of dates on, on the meeting schedule. There's a meeting schedule in your packet.
Did I miss that?
And if you notice that it's, uh, the first Monday of each month, um, the time is blank. Um, I was wondering if we were able to keep this nine o'clock time, and that is something that you all can discuss.
Well, I think it certainly depends on what happens with this virtual, uh, meeting world that we're in. Uh, hopefully, we'll be to a point where we can meet in person. Um, and, uh, I can only speak for myself that this particular time right now works for me. Uh, and I'm sorry that if I missed the, uh, I'm looking for the dates. What, you said it was in the, the full agenda package?
It's in the full agenda package. It should be on the last page.
Did everybody receive that schedule?
Go down.
Yes.
I did.
Okay. Uh, and it's basically the first Monday of every month?
Sorry.
Nine o'clock in the morning is not a good time for me on Mondays because I have another and get, uh, schedule conflict every Monday at nine o'clock. So I would always be late, at least a half an hour late to every meeting if it's at nine o'clock in the morning. But one o'clock in the afternoon is a perfect time right now.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. I should probably follow the script. I'm sorry. Let me go through the order. Ibrahim Malik.
Yeah, the morning shift works good for me, particularly if we're going to be doing it virtually. It would work well for me.
The nine o'clock hour is, is still good?
Yeah, typically Mondays are pretty decent for me. There are a couple of months in the spring and a couple of months in the summer that I am required to do some extra work on Mondays in the morning. But that is at around 10:30 or so. So the early morning Monday would work fine for me.
Okay. Thank you. Martha Davis?
Yes, um, right now Mondays are okay, as long as we're doing it virtually. Nine o'clock is okay, but once we move to in-person.
Yeah, you're driving in.
Getting to Hilton Head nine o'clock, that would be a challenge for me.
Understood.
And do we need to meet every month or every other month?
I mean, that is certainly a question that we can entertain.
It is up to you on how often, if you want to meet fewer than once a month, we can make adjustments to that schedule. And it's in order, and, and to address Teresa, your question. Even if you are, if you're 30 minutes late, that's fine. I do understand that sometimes life gets in the way. But just waiting to hear from the rest of the, the members.
I, I would suggest, well, let me go through the role of Palmer Simmons.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am pretty flexible. I have a Monday does work for me. But I, I, I'm pretty flexible, but yes, Monday at nine does work for me.
I would suggest that you hold the other members who aren't here because four people are missing. And before I came, I don't think we even had a forum. So if you have that many people missing at nine o'clock in the morning, there must be a reason why. And I think it's because there are some people who are still working. They might be, they have the flexibility of, of using their lunch hour to come to a meeting at one o'clock. And maybe extending it, but at nine o'clock in the morning, that's the beginning of, pretty much the beginning of their workday. And particularly for lawyers, they usually have something in court that early in the morning. So that might be a bit of a stretch for them to get here at nine o'clock in the morning. But I would suggest that we check with those other people who are not here and see what their position is before we definitely decide to do nine o'clock in the morning on Mondays.
Teresa, I can speak to some of that because I did, did try to reach out to most of the members. And again, Joyce Wright was going to be here. It was just that she had conflict with another appointment, so that's kind of a one-time thing. The same thing for Shawnee. And I think that was really the most of, of the members I had not heard from Todd Theodore or Caroline McVitty as to why they were not able to make the meeting here now. What I'm going to suggest as chairman is that we maybe approve this meeting schedule that we have before us. I'd rather have it on the, on the, on the, on the docket. And if we need to cancel meetings, then we can cer- certainly put it that way. As of right now, we do have a quorum. We do have most of us. And the response that I had was that quite a few people would be able to make it. It is challenging to find a balance of time between everybody's schedule. But I think for right now, Charisse, while we're doing it virtually, as Ms. Davis said, this is kind of working. If things loosen up, we may need to come back and, and look at this particular item. But I'm not sure that we want to wait on this item till the next meeting because we're kind of, you know, having one meeting at a time. If we can get folks to look at the schedule and put it on their calendars now, then we can address if there are any issues going forward.
Well, that makes sense. And as you said, if it's necessary that we can cancel the meeting, that is fine as well. So we can make adjustments as we go on.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I just have one, perhaps. I noticed that the July meeting is on the 5th of July. The fourth being on the Sunday. Would that have any, would that have any bearing on us holding the meeting with the fourth being a holiday?
It probably would. And as we get to July, we would probably have to figure out a different meeting date. But again, we can always make adjustments as we're moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions or comments? With that, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the meeting schedule that we have before us.
I would make a motion to approve the meeting schedule as presented.
Thank you, Ibrahim. Is there a second?
There's a, a second.
Thank you, Palmer. So the meeting schedule that we have before us is approved. And we, we do understand that if we need to make some adjustments as we go along, I think we have that flexibility. Okay. We have taken.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, you still have to call for a vote. You got a, a second, but you didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Charisse. Thank you. I got so excited about seeing adjournment down there.
Yes, and then you still have to, still have to, we, this delinquent property tax, that's not a huge item. It's just bringing you up to date on it, but I get it.
I apologize. Let's go through and for the record, have the vote for the meeting schedule first. Ibrahim Malik.
Approve.
Martha Davis.
Approve.
Palmer Simmons.
Approve.
Teresa White.
Abstain.
I'm sorry?
Abstain.
Abstain. And I, I approve. Then what does that do for us, Charisse?
The motion carries. Your motion carries, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Let me back up and go back up to the, sorry, I overlooked this. Delinquent property taxes for 2021. Thank you, Charisse.
Yes, this is actually quick. So last year, there were 145 properties that were delinquent as of April 2020. And only four properties will be, need, need to be redeemed before that October deadline. January 15th was when property taxes were due. And even in light of this COVID schedule, I am thinking that they are still going to hold with the, the delinquent tax schedule. So I will be working again with Beaufort County to generate that list of property owners who are delinquent and paying taxes. And so once that's made available, I will give you that list to do the work that you did last year. So congratulations in getting the number of property owners who owe that taxes down. And hopefully the ones that are still in redemption, we can get them out for 2021. That's all I had to say on that.
I would like to know the names of those four people because I think I got everybody on Hilton Head, but in case I missed anybody. Because I redeemed at least three properties on Hilton Head. And I, as far as I know, we had done all the ones in Beaufort County for the 2020 tax sale. This one is all the ones from 2019. But I, I would like to see which four people you said went to the tax sale so I can make sure that if I missed one, I get that one. Because I have enough money still in reserve to pay anything that I might have accidentally missed. And I can do that within the next 24 hours if you will send me those four names.
Yes, sir. I, I mean, yes, ma'am. I can, I can do that. And I think it's, and I think it's a correction. I think it is three. But I'll send you the names that I have, and you can see if those have already been redeemed.
Okay, because I tried to, I, I called everybody. I know I checked with Alex and, and I tried to make sure that I got everybody that was still on that list. So if I missed one, and I, and I didn't do too bad, but I got three for sure.
Well, we certainly appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Quite welcome.
And Charisse, you will share that with the task force?
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay.
You know what?
I'm sorry?
Did you say something about sharing something with the task force?
Yeah, sharing that with our entire task force.
Oh, and writing?
Whatever those three names are.
Oh, okay. No problem.
And that is yet another example of how, when we are working together and the value of each one of our task force members and the knowledge and expertise that we have, how we can work hand in hand. I will also commend members of the community who have participated in this effort in the last three or four years to reduce the loss of, through the tax sale. That is a, a on-the-ground effort and certainly comes from a lot of our people in the community. That's just yet another good example of how we can work together to address that particular issue. I will go through the role just to see if anybody has any questions or comments on this particular item, property taxes. Ibrahim Malik.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I would like to commend the work that Teresa has done over the, over the last few years that I've witnessed. It's been a very commendable work that she's been chairing. And I guess the comment I have is, with regards to the educational part of the tax fund that the staff will be working on, Charisse, did you all have any plans to include the work that Teresa is doing or the effort that Teresa has as a part of that educational project?
I'm not, I'm trying to think of what you're asking. Are you asking if the delinquent tax is an educational piece? Because.
I'm, I'm sorry. Let me, let me clarify. I was simply, I guess I was asking whether or not the, the tax fund that you are going to be establishing. Would Teresa's organization be a part of that process?
Well, if she is willing to work with us, we certainly would value her input, her help on establishing that fund. So certainly.
I, I guess the reason why, the reason I'm throwing it out there is the fact that it appears that with her organization, she has some of the infrastructure already in place. She has, she has a foundation. She has the community outreach. And perhaps her ombrologist needs to simply be extended, you know, a little bit more involved with our community. But I guess what I'm saying is that if we, if we have resources that we can funnel to her with the infrastructure that she already has in place, we don't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel.
And your point is taken on that. I believe if I'm remembering, and I don't have it in front of me, the framework. I do believe that Ms. White's organization is a part of that, that recommendation. So certainly you're correct. We don't want to just reinvent something that's already in place.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ibrahim. Martha Davis?
No comment.
Okay, thank you. Palmer Simmons?
Definitely just want to definitely, once again, thank Teresa for, for the work she's done. As Ibrahim said, you know, down through the years, Teresa's been on that battlefield for a long time. And obviously, as her efforts is bearing some real fruits. So definitely want to thank her and hopefully that Teresa will definitely find a way to include Teresa's effort so we don't have to reinvent what she's obviously been very successful at. So definitely our hats off to Teresa, whom I've known for a long time to be doing what she does. So that being said, we, that pretty much concludes my comments.
Thank you, Palmer, and thank you, Ibrahim.
More than welcome.
Okay, my comments would certainly be the same as everybody else's. And along with Teresa, there have been people, individuals in our community. She mentioned Alex Brown, of course. And many of us have tried to do what we can to reduce the loss of our property through the tax sales. I actually come in contact with people who support Teresa's organization with financial contributions and things like that. So I echo everyone else in thanking Teresa as well as others in the community who have made those efforts. But Teresa has been at the forefront of trying to do what she can to help those families in jeopardy.
Thank you, and you're welcome.
Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, I do believe I have covered all the items on the agenda now. And I, I want to thank all of you for being here in the meeting. Hopefully, again, I will restate the, we can work closely together to be more engaged. And these meetings could probably be a little shorter. But I do appreciate you taking your time, and we hope that this time will continue to work for us for now. And we will be open to adjusting the meeting schedule going forward. I will be reaching out to each one of the task force members to keep them engaged and to refresh, re-energize our efforts going forward. Looking forward to the work that staff is doing along with the public planning committee and those other members of town council to, as Charisse said, to move something forward. And those things that we're still struggling with, we're not going to just kick them off to the side. But we will keep them in our homework bag as well. Charisse, do you have anything else for us?
That's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for your, your work and your time and your attention and the staff along with you as well. If there are, if there are no other questions, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move for adjournment?
Thank you. We've got a lot of seconds. Thank you all. Stay safe, be healthy, and I appreciate your work. Have a good day.
Thank you. Have a good day, everyone.